...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all just return a manner of silence after what you do business with. Thank you all very much. We have four, six items for the council to, well, it's five items for the council to listen to. A spring vacation project, Mr. Gordon and Mr. Hartwell?
I don't see my main reason to be here. And I don't see, are you gentlemen here at the center of the university?
No.
Is that a low?
Well, let's.
Actually, we're going to get a whole off on that because I think Leroy is supposed to be.
Is this when he's going to tell his jokes? You want to tell your jokes right now?
Yeah.
My jokes.
Let's, let's, let's move on to, well, we're, we're waiting for well one and two replacements.
We can stick with that.
Let's move on to well one and two replacements.
Okay, so Paul Cross, Grace Chu has joined us this evening. He's going to give us an update on two projects. These are very critical projects, as you know. The consolidation project involves the CCF well relocation in well number one, as well as a loop coming to support the water supply. And then well number two is one we're contemplating to be placed relocated over by the Maple Street location, which is near our tanks. So Paul's come graciously this evening and has some handouts and we'll go ahead and talk. The intent tonight is really to just give you a briefing on where we're at. This project is critical, but at the same time, it's not moving nearly as quickly as we would like. And so we kind of like to give you a, kind of, the number where we're at. With that said, I will go ahead.
I like maps. I like maps.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come here, here, okay?
We can take our time.
Hey, you're here. I'm here for the council. Pretty appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Again, we're still a pretty exciting project for us as well. Guess I would start off by first saying how lucky I feel you are to have a strong staff. Now, Mike and Robert and Paul are just delightful. And we appreciated that very much. They've really come together, a project, a couple of projects really together, both financially and with a good concept in mind that I think will really serve the city well into the future. So I did want, and again, I get really excited about this stuff. I could speak for hours and I know you don't want me to. So I'll try to keep it under control and make sense.
Which we're very appreciative of.
Here, here.
All right, so Advance is doing what?
It's not working.
Should be just back there this year.
Did it work? You know, of course.
We need to be turned on.
Lisa, why don't you?
There you go.
There we go. Okay. Does that work?
Lisa, I can hear you. Push it.
Oh, there we go.
There you go. That was me.
Okay. All right, that is also not quite right. Can we just keep clicking? Very good. That should do it. Okay, so just in terms of presentation overview, we want to talk a little bit about the funding. Again, I'm sure you've heard about the loans that have been received and particularly the legislative applications that were sent out and received and the appropriations, which were all really cool things. But what Robert asked me to speak to particularly tonight is kind of where we're at right now and what the critical path elements are that are keeping us moving, but kind of with the brakes on at the same time. And those are related to the loan documents themselves, to environmental compliance issues and to the water rights consolidation efforts that are going on. So after that, I'll talk a little bit about how we need to go forward and what that schedule for design and construction looks like, together with some challenges. So funding. Again, the, we originally applied for a drinking water state revolving fund loan for the water system consolidation with the understanding that in any one project, you're limited to $3 million. And that this project was, in all likelihood, 4.1, 4.2 million dollars. And therefore, we, and getting to Robert's credit, he worked all this out with the drinking water state revolving fund folks in Advance that, hey, can we do like a two-phase project? Again, I know you can't guarantee it. Can we kind of write it so that phase one is for 3 million and then phase two could be the balance of that and still take advantage of the special considerations for that? And that particular consideration is the fact that, that we're extending water out to the CCF property that have, that have water quality issues. And the consolidation of the city system with the original CCF project allows for a significant reduction in overall costs to everyone. But to do that, you can't just kind of extend water out there, drill a well and expect it all to work the way the city needs it to work. And so a big part of this was also looping the water along both from Towerson and over to, around the high school at South College Place. So that again, a new well situated that far out of town will still meet your needs to pump to the elevated reservoir and not impact pressures within the city. Again, the idea being that we needed to resolve the high nitrate problems that were at the CCF property and yet make it all work together. So we also then were prepared to do some DWSRF loans for the phase two, which was the balance of the 4.2 million that was above the 3 million dollars. Again, the concept being here that with a consolidation grant, which are very unique scenarios, the loans have a 50% forgiveness opportunity, which is really cool. And then, then Mike came through with additional legislative appropriations on top of that, which is really going to give us the flexibility we need, so. Critical path elements. It's very interesting to work with this type of program. You know, you think, wow, this is a great deal. We're going to get low interest loans. We're going to have these opportunities to borrow money and pay it back over time. But it's never without some catch. And some of those catches are, they're very linear in their thinking. The first thing that really caught us up was, oh, by the way, before we can offer these loan contracts, the capital budget has to be passed. Well, in July, I think it was 20th of 2017, the legislature in their wisdom chose not to pass the capital budget for a lot of political reasons. But what it did was it delayed the city's applications for almost an entire year. We didn't find out until, oh, I think it was the second week in January that the capital budget was in fact going to be passed. And then it still delayed the offering of the loan contracts significantly. In fact, the city is just, I'm sure you're aware, has just recently executed a contract in your E-HAB, but it's gone to the state now for, for final execution and that still has not occurred. So that really limits some of the things that we can do before that those contracts are, are done. One of them is, is that again, the way that the state takes things very literally and very linearly, they couldn't really work on providing us feedback on the cultural and historic impacts that we were going to have to evaluate. They let us do a certain amount of work up to a certain point and then it kind of stopped. And they said, well, we can't really start consultation until we get a little bit further along, till those loan agreements at least go out to you. And so we played the patience game for a long period of time, done as much as we possibly could. But ultimately, that cultural and historic evaluation and consultation with the tribes all has to occur before you can start construction at all. And in fact, we're fortunate that they've actually allowed us to do some ground disturbance activities as, in conjunction with the cultural, so that we can do some geotechnical investigations. Because up to now, we've been unable to even go out and take test holes to make sure that we've got adequate soil strength for the buildings and whether or not we'll encounter rock along the pipelines and how to cross SR125 trenchless though. So again, very linear and we've done as much as we can. We're pushing that envelope, but we still need some of these critical items to occur. The second really important thing that, that happened is, is again, and you know this, you've got three wells that have a variety of water rights. Two of those wells, one of the wells has failed. The other one is on life support, we'll put it that way. So we're looking for different places to punch new wells. Even, even though it's down into what our hydrogeologists believe is the same body of public water, it still requires a process to add those additional locations as approved points of withdrawal. And so we've been going through the Wall Wall Conservancy Board concurrently with Department of Ecology in Spokane to get these additional points of withdrawal approved. And then also importantly, that the water rights all work together. So that each, each point of withdrawal has either a given water right or the ability to share the water right with the other three locations. Ultimately, that means that the whole portfolio of water that the city has could be taken at any or all of the locations that we've identified in this change application, which is a really cool, flexible thing that'll give you. But it's a process. And again, it's been one that, that we've invested several months in already and we still haven't gotten a decision. We're very hopeful that, that the Conservancy Board has made recommendations to Ecology to approve this, but they've not done yet. And once they do that, then there's still a 30-day waiting period, protest period, public comment period, at which they have time, they have to consider. And then if they have any comments, then they have to make considerations of those, all before they will approve the additional point of withdrawal. And as far as our designs go, we rely upon this information. We need to know certain things about the soils, about the water, about the quantity of water we're going to get before we can advance the, the design too far. So that's where we're at right now. Where do we go now? How do we move forward? So again, as I mentioned, the cultural and historic view process is starting to move. We just got word this week, in fact. They've received, they had received the overview reports from us quite some time ago. But they've now reported to us that consultation has begun, which starts the clock. Again, they, the reports and the recommendations go to the Washington State Department of Historical, Historical and?
Preservation?
Yeah. DHP anyway. And Historic Preservation, there you go, thank you. And, and then also to the tribes. And they have roughly 30 days, really 35 days to, to review the findings. And even before they agree or disagree, they can actually then use that 35 days to tell us, we'd like you to investigate over here. We'd like you to do more shovel samples than you did. Or we're really concerned in this area. Some combination thereof is still possible. But again, the good news is that at least that information's out to the tribes. It's out to DHP and they can get back to us with some information so we can move forward. Again, construction, no construction at all can happen prior to completing that entire process. And that's not just the consultation. If there's additional reports that they ask for, additional information, that needs to happen before any construction can occur. Again, the water right process is proceeding. Assuming that we can get Ecology to approve the, the application, which we expect very soon, there'll be at least a 30-day appeal process. And then a bit of paperwork after that to give finally something in writing that you have an approved water rights change that will allow you to drill. So what we've been wanting to do is drill that first well. Go out to the CCF property, drill a well, make sure that we can get water, make sure, find out how deep it is, find out the static level, do some pump testing on it, develop it, figure out how much water we can achieve at that location. And we can't do any of that until those first two items are done. Can't just, can't move a shovel full of dirt until that's, that occurs. So once we can do that and once we can find out more about the water, more about the soils that are crossing SR125, then we can, we can put out a contract to drill a well and we can start submitting permit applications to cross SR125. So where are we at in the design right now? Well, we actually have 60% plans done for the CCF site and the water line going between Towerson, is that Towerson?
And then all the way under SR125.
Right.
To?
I always say that the road wrong, the road name wrong, if not incorrect, so. So those are about 60%. They're about as far as we can take it realistically without getting more of a permit information resolved and to get the geotechnical information. We did come out and met with Paul and, and the staff and talked more about electrical and telemetry needs for SCADA at the site. And that kickoff or site review is complete. So that's going to be, will allow the, the electrical design to proceed. The city is, is moving forward with SEPA and that's proceeding. And we anticipate a declaration of nonsignificance should be coming shortly. So given that information, where we're at right now, what do we need to proceed further? Again, it bears repeating, we've got to get the cultural resource survey completed and consultation completed. We need to get out there with a backhoe and do some geotechnical investigations to be able to know what the soils are for the building design and also for the WashDOT permit, assuming that we're going to bore underneath the road with a trenchless type construction. We need the water rights approvals and those change of points of diversion. Or we cannot even go out and drill a test well to find out if there's water where we need it. You can't do that without an approved point of diversion. And then finally, we need to actually do that well drilling, testing, develop that well and determine what sustainable yield is out there so that we can select pumps and other equipment that's necessary. So how many, how many contracts, what should we, should we expect this to look like? So again, we've got well drilling, that's a separate contract, design of the well building and construction of the well building and mechanical work, and then well de-chemishing times two. So we'll do that at well one and we'll do that at the replacement of well two. We also have the water main construction and that might be in multiple schedules. It certainly needs to be structured in a way to align itself with the funding and perhaps the permitting, depending upon how quickly WashDOT can get the work done. So there could be as many as two water main contracts, depending upon the permits and schedules. So if my math is right, that's as many as eight public work contracts that we may be advertising, opening, awarding, negotiating and administering. So we're going to rely upon the council to be well informed. So please ask me questions if you've got them and ready to proceed with that. So when will that occur? Again, our best estimate is those critical path items might be done by October-ish, 1st of October. So that we're hoping that we could start drilling an investigative well, well number one in, in late fall of 2018. So November-ish according to the schedule that I gave you. That would allow us, again, given the fact that we're going to have to drill, develop, it all takes time. That's going to take anywhere from eight to 12 weeks-ish. So we're going to be in the, have the ability at that point to know what your sustainable yield's going to be at that location so that we can finish the design. We can get the design done rapidly at that point, but then we'll have to advertise for bids for the well building and mechanical work to be done in the spring, started in the spring of 2019 with roughly six months worth of time to get that constructed. Water main construction, again, this is something that, that Paul and Robert and Mike and I still need to work on. We could be more aggressive on that, but, but I think the thought's been at this point that we'd really like to know that the well's going to work at that location before we start extending pipelines out to that location. But once we kind of have some certainty that there's a sustainable well there, then we'll probably want to be pretty aggressive on starting those pipelines, get those connections done in hopes and anticipation that WashDOT permits will come and follow quickly thereafter. So I haven't talked much about well number two, but well number two really is all about being smart on how well one has progressed. If well one makes sense, we get good yields, we've got good contracts, the prices look good, I can see it falling in 30 to 45 days aggressively after well number one, maybe as much as two to three months after well number one to get drilled that well and at the, at the location near the East Side Booster Pump Station. Get that drilled and develop and then follow through with construction of the well building and mechanical at that location, which will be significantly less complicated given the fact that it's right within the city's infrastructure. So again, somewhere in that two to three month lay with completion of all projects by the spring of, that should say.
We're done. We're done. Good job, guys.
How about 2020? Spring of 2020. And probably, again, we, we think we'll have water connected and at least the well went on by the fall of, of 2019. So that you have some reliability back in. Again, the question is the, the connection and everything else. But I apologize for that typo. I think that should have been 2020.
Have a quick question.
Sure.
When you're selecting this site for the wells, is there, and there may not be a way, but is there a way of knowing geologically what is underneath that proposed site? And the reason why I ask that, perhaps the ground or underneath it is similar throughout the valley or perhaps not. But in the case of an earthquake, the misalignment of a well that would happen after that perhaps, is there any way to mitigate that on the selection site? Or is there, or is that not possible?
Well, we, our hydrogeologists in conjunction with local geologists and two engineering firms took a hard look at that question. We were really very concerned of, is there really some underlying way to, to make that determination? And while there's guesses and, you know, thoughts of, of where the different folds are in the basalt and trying to avoid those folds, aside from that, everything else is relatively uniform. And the, the production of the basalt in terms of a water producing body is relatively similar throughout this general area. And so we felt pretty confident, both the well two site being next to the East Side Booster Pump Station and at the CCF site, that we were far enough away from other wells that perhaps we'd have less issues with the subsidence that's occurred in the past and/or geological activity, whatever that's been, that we believe would have been associated more with the folds in those basalt areas. But we tried to use the best information that's available that we know of, but you know, short of making a science project out of it, there wasn't a real good way to get at that with that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if I could just jump in, the other thing we're doing is we're actually, if you recall, some of that shifting in the strata below that we're seeing the other wells is relatively minute, but it's enough not to go get the wells in, the pumps in and out and the spiders and so forth. What we're doing is also we're looking at oversizing those shafts just a little bit to give us a little bit of leeway. So even if we do get a little bit of movement, the hope is that we're a little bit wider and consider stopping.
Makes sense.
And also looking for sites that have enough flexibility that even if that happened, you could, without going through the whole change process, again, you could drill another well next to that if we needed to. So all of those combinations of physical things, of what we can see geologically and hydrogeologically, together with these other safeguards that we can do, are going to mitigate some of the risk, but the risk is still there.
Thank you.
So again, and my first point in the challenge is really addresses what you're talking about and that's the sustainability of water. And that could be a function of both the geology, but also the hydrogeology. And even drilling a well, there's no guarantee that there's going to be a certain quantity of water that's at that location despite the best studies that are available. We'll know when we get there. And, and I wish there was a better way to know that, but I know I went through an experience in the Tri-Cities just this fall where we had drilled a well and gotten around 1,600 gallons per minute out of the well. Really nice yield, good well. We moved over 300 feet, drilled again and only got 700. It made no sense. I mean, there was the same. We, we have a lot of proceedings. Can we move on? Absolutely, absolutely, sorry. Another challenge is just the construction indices themselves. They're, they're increasing rapidly. You know, we're seeing that in some other projects. Bids are just going to be higher. So I think some of the contingency dollars that we've, we've obtained are going to be very helpful. Again, in terms of the, the contracts themselves, there's bio-American provisions in the loan documents and both Davis Bacon and state prevailing wages. So these are going to be relatively expensive projects. Again, multiple permits and agency reviews. We've got a lot of different people that need to satisfy. We've set the stage to get those approvals, but it will take more time. And with that, again, the summary is what I, what I told you about. I can skip over that unless you have additional questions. Questions for? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So Mr. Hartwell, I think we're back to you.
It's not the first time.
We have Leroy Wagner here. He's a professional surveyor. He used to be the, used to be the surveyor for the county. I appreciate his knowledge and the ability to research and find information. So there's been interest in vacating the roads and alleys, city right of ways around Wall Wall University. around Wall Wall University. And so I'm going to let you take off and kind of go through them.
Yeah. Go from here.
Yeah.
Or from here. Kind of a colorful map. And of course, there's a reason. I don't know if you have, the one that doesn't have the photos, think that might work better.
It's in the packet.
What are you looking for?
It's the first time.
Ah, there we go. That doesn't spin around.
Rotate it three, what, three times?
Looks like we'll have to.
Ah, there we go.
There you go.
We've done that before.
We'll make it work.
Yeah, we're all oriented now. The arrow means.
Or you could all just stand on your head.
So it might be easier.
Quite an interesting project and maze, really, to figure out what in the world, through the years, happened here in College Place around the university. And if you look at the legend there, you'll see several different colors, and it's hard from, what's this do?
A pointer.
Oh.
The red.
Ah, great. So you'll see there are several different ones. I can't read. Pardon me?
The pointer might be what's causing the feedback.
Okay. I'll leave it on. The red, and I don't know that I can read it too well from here, says City of College Place Right-of-Way Vacations. That color there, actually, you can see the red is those took place over a period of time.
I think it's that in front of the thing. That happened before.
Try just skipping loud without mics. Ah, there we go. So those, that red represents copies of vacation documents that I received from here when I first started this project. And I think that all of us sort of kind of believed that that was all reluctance, and initially, that's what we were going with. And then you'll also notice they're just below that in green, Wall Wall County Right-of-Way Vacations are probably the place. So you'll, so you've got green there over on the right, and we kind of assumed that could have happened, but there was no record in the City of College Place for that. And then down there on Babe, that was a complete surprise, and the west, in there of southwest, you see the green in front of the church. That became a surprise a little bit later. But if you'll notice, right next to that, you'll see a combination of red and green that may be harder to tell, but that's the odd color there. And what that represents is a duplicate right-of-way vacation. So without getting into all the time and the details that went into figuring this out, I was communicating with Cindy Fazio down at the assessor's office and noticed, asked her some questions, and we both noticed that she showed that some streets had already been vacated that weren't showing up in the city's records. And then through conversations back and forth, we discovered that on the whole, the county, before the city was, what's the word I want? Yeah, incorporated, the Wall Wall County was responsible for the vacations that were requested by the university. And lo and behold, even though the City of College Place came into existence in 1892, it was as early as 1899 when the University of College then requested a vacation of all that area that you see as duplicated. So that was really kind of a shocker, but it also was a surprise in those records supplying that the green areas had also been vacated. A couple of different, actually, ones over here east of College Avenue were separate documents of different times, but basically, all of that area over there was a duplicated effort, but originally, they did a better, they didn't say that they did a better job because they actually vacated the alleys at that time. And second try, I think it was about 1960 or '61, that wasn't accomplished. So it was good to be able to find that, and it really kind of took care of a bunch of things that I think I was asked to look into. And turns out, you're not even going to have to go to this university, because, say, hey, people that have vacated Babe, it's done. Been done a long time. So what's left, I understand that, in fact, I was instructed that the blue area is those areas that you would like to vacate. I think the university would like that to happen also. And then finally, they all go to the, right down at the bottom, it shows lots not owned by Wall Wall University. There are only two left in that whole span across there, and that's up there at block six and block 19 right there, and you're probably aware of this, but I was kind of surprised to discover that, because of course, there's all sorts of residences on there that are currently rented by the university. Going now, way over to West Davis Avenue, that actually was quite the mystery, and I think it was 1992, that the railroad needed to the university. Blockout Bend, the old railroad alignment that went up through there, including north of Whitman. But what was interesting to discover in figuring out exactly where that was in relationship to the actual plating right-of-way of the original street, which was not named Davis, I can't remember the name right offhand, but it turns out that there was, when it was all said and done and this was plotted, there was a strip, kind of a, what shall I say, a varying width strip, right along there, yes, thank you for pointing that out, that I think that the City College Place and the university tried to straighten that out at some point, and believed that everything had been taken care of, but there was actually, if you were to do a title report and a thorough, you discovered that that little bit right there hadn't not been vacated yet, because it was assumed that the railroad occupied all that, so that whenever the railroad needed the right-of-way to the college, that that was gone. But not only that, there's another situation over adjacent to right adjacent on the east side of Davis and just west of the railroad, which is a little sliver right there. You probably can't see it at this scale, but if you look at the, with the orange or whatever color that is, kind of the yellowish-orange colors there at Davis, over, you might speak that over, and you could actually pull that up a little bit. Yeah. Can you tell that there is a very slender strip, and I've labeled it there at the top, and it says, "Five-foot prescribed right-of-way claimed by the City of College Place." I've labeled it that because frankly, I think that the City of College Place has assumed that because it's not really owned by the college, and because it wasn't part of the old railroad right-of-way, but the truth is that Davis came about in, from the plating of Sub-Deuce to the west, and it was only originally a 40-foot strip, 20 meters each side of that center line. And so now, if you, and I'll talk about this later, can you slip on up now, I want to look at south of Fourth Street? A little bit.
South.
And you can kind of zoom in on that if you want to.
That's it.
Look. You'll notice that Davis and Davis South there, South and Fourth do line up, but you'll notice that there's a significant right-of-way width difference. So up to the north, you've got the 40-foot of dedicated right-of-way on that old plat, and then you've got a five-foot strip that I'm referring to as prescribed right-of-way. And then down here, south of Fourth, I think it was 1916, if I have that key in my stuff, but it's not really that important right now. But the county and the university and the City of College Place worked together to widen that right-of-way. And of course, partly, I think, for the sake of parking and so forth. So there is actually a total of 60 feet there, and generally speaking, that's what the county is always after, whenever they're doing right-of-way dedications on the plats, et cetera. So, but what you have right to the east for this side of the orange strip there, the orange, of course, is railroad right-of-way that was needed to the university. There is remaining a five-foot strip there that was not vacated by the city, and never was needed in any way. So it's the five-foot strip that's still there, and kind of a odd, odd situation. I assume all of us might have a discussion about that, I'm not sure. But what you actually have over on the west side of the railroad, the railroad, the old railroad right-of-way, and the new existing, I think the new 1968, the Davis Avenue there, are coinciding each other in that case, and there's a total of 60 feet. There's, I believe it's 25 east of that Magenta Center Line and 35 feet west. Yeah. So it was a combination, really, of, you know, one step at a time discovery and getting help from Cindy Fazio, and then going out to the county, which I'm very familiar with, and digging through some of their records. And I had no clue until then that this existed. I didn't really understand that prior to 1947, Wall Wall County declared vacations. It's possible throughout the city, College Place, there are others, these are right-of-ways that can be made, and maybe not, maybe they aren't even surprising, so we just have a little mark.
Questions from Mr. White?
Yeah, so I'm just maybe a little bit confused here on this map here, it's showing Davis is a straight street. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm misoriented. Okay, I was looking at Fourth Street. I was confused because I was looking at Sixth. Never mind.
But by the way, one thing I also should show, share with you, and that is, one of the key items that really helped me in all this was a 1960 map of College Place that had been drawn by Wall Wall County. They did a meticulous job of, you know, even long before me, of drawing grade maps and putting the information on there. But what you'll notice, if you would zoom back up and down, you'll notice some right-of-way widths there on Fourth Street that are a little bit odd. When the town of, well, number one, or what was called City College Place Number One, the north half of Fourth was dedicated as a 30-foot right-of-way, and so you can see that there included. And then, let's see, flat number two actually have only a 20-foot right-of-way on the south side of that in general. But the county shows a 30-foot, both sides there, up to Babe, from College Avenue up to there. And then you'll notice it's 30 on the north and 25 on the south, and then if you continue to the west there, it's 25 as platted on the, on that old plat west of Davis. And then there's a 30-foot shown on that map, and I believe that that is the lead case, although I couldn't find a document for that. Nor could I find a document for the 25 on this side, so I believe that somewhere there may be a lead for a five-foot strip. So if you were to go to the other map now that has the photo. And it's, it's probably hard at this scale, you have, and it's not as clear as online, or this is just a scan on my computer, on CAD, if you zoom in, there's wonderful aerial photos that you guys have, that I now have too. You could actually see that on the north side of Fourth, so can you pull it down till we see Davis, which is up that way? There we go. Sorry.
What do you want?
Okay, there you go.
Wrong control.
You can't see it at this scale, but over there on Davis, that five-foot strip that I was talking about, it's interesting that that dashed line that I'm showing as the right-of-way line, you know, right, matches up at the back of her. Exactly. So somebody may have, somebody may have already known this, and of course, I'm just going through the process of discovering, but. Oh, and in other cases, it's also true. Now, if you slide way over to the other direction, yep, if you look at Whitman, right there where we want to vacate, Clay and Babe, you'll notice that I've come short up all the way up to Whitman, there to leave. When that project was done in 2014, I believe, there were leads and legal script written by Eric Green and Anderson Perry, to pull those curvy turns and pull the sidewalks and so forth there. And so even though there had been whole strips of vacated right-of-way on Whitman way back when, some of that was, a lot of that was all purchased back from the university. And so I have dimensioned that portion, those portions of Babe and Clay as the southern 263 feet, because it takes you right up to where you stop that curvy turn.
Who's seven?
I have a question probably more for, have we talked to the university about this? Are they?
Yeah.
Know about it?
Actually, Mike would be, he's been the one who's been in contact with them.
I talked with Steve, and then simply look at us, vacating the streets that we want to.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. I think you can see it there, because you've seen the new bicycle path or alternative path there, the turns inside, I'm only coming up to there, because I think the city wants to do that. But you can see some pure regular strange, strangeness in the red, that used all of those all the way from Davis to College Avenue, there were 10-foot spread. I don't know what they were thinking way back then, that they actually vacated the southern 10 feet of Westwood. Because they didn't need it. Because it didn't need it.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's good.
Interesting stuff.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
So Wall Wall University Parking Management. Is there a, does it have a term of university here at all or?
I don't think so.
Moving right on then.
Hey, uh, Mayor, I, I can cover it just very briefly.
Thank you.
Because I've dealt with this with them. So, uh, the premise behind this project is if you recall in the workshop, about seven or eight months ago, uh, we went over the whole, uh, parking management issues surrounding the campus and general thoughts about maybe doing a district or some other concepts. Well, since that time, we, uh, started a discussion with the, uh, university and, uh, their planning group that's gone through Doug Tilstra. They are now going to assign park and throughout the campus, uh, to help mitigate the parking issue in the neighborhoods surrounding the university. So you could see the proposal in the map for the dark green lots, uh, that'll be for faculty, staff and guests. Light green will be, uh, Philip Student and Guest. Dark orange will be for men's residence hall. Light orange will be for women's residence hall. And then black will be reserved areas. Uh, so they put together this plan. It's going to be implemented this quarter and, uh, pretty much through our discussions, we'll see how it goes from there, but at least it's a start.
Questions from Mr. Lucicello?
How, how do they plan on enforcing this? Keeping them off the streets or? I mean, as a former student who drove three blocks to class.
From, uh, from the meetings that I've been to with them, they're actually going to make it a code of conduct issue where if they get, they're going to start enforcing the parking a lot more than if they get reports, it's going to become a conduct issue from what I would say. So.
That's equal part.
They'll start with faculty.
I was assured that I can park both by my office and by my lab.
I was just told they're going to be assigning everyone parking and then folks will be expected to adhere to that. It's the directive they're giving to security staff.
Cool. I like it.
Thank you very much for Mr. Lucicello. We have two presentations by, one by the rural library district and one by Columbia Libraries. Mr. Lucicello, would you start this off?
Okay, thank you. Uh, as you recall, some time ago, there was a discussion about the whole library services, uh, don't want love because there's, uh, folks in the city who, uh, really wanted library services and then there's others that don't keep the money for Wall Wall County. We're basically a donut hole in the county because the city of Wall Wall has the city of Wall Wall Library and then the unincorporated rural parts of the county, including Burbank and Prescott, uh, that's under the rural library district. Um, and then in the past, when we've done the surveys, again, it's a very divided issue where it's hard to tell one way or, or another, how people feel. It's right near the fifty percent mark on both ways. Uh, so we, uh, reached out to folks who would essentially be able to provide said services because in the survey, the thing that the folks who, uh, were asking for services said was a stumbling block was the ability to get to the library, like out of Wall Wall, for instance, uh, paying for it, uh, then in general getting out to it. So if something like that would exist, it would need to be in the city if we are going to be part of the Daxton District. Other issue with this is money. Uh, libraries are not free. Uh, out of the, uh, unincorporated county, uh, they have a tax on levy that goes for, uh, the rural library district. Uh, one of the things that we did just to understand the demand is we ran a little bit of a pilot program for the library card reimbursements earlier this year. And when we did the reimbursement program, we heavily advertised it and we actually ran out of the funds for the year for that program within the first four hours of the first day. So folks evidently were using it. So at that point in time, we thought we'd engage with, uh, folks who could provide services and who, if they were to provide services in the city, would entertain the concept of a facility in College Place. Uh, city of Wall Wall, uh, we didn't bring them to the table because when we asked everyone for proposals, they said they were not interested ever operating in the facility, period. Uh, so we thought we'd invite them here for a brief presentation and then at the end juncture, uh, it would really be frankly, the vote of the people, uh, but it would be with the consent of this council body as far as to put it in the ballot. So, uh, with that, uh, first up would be rural library district.
Hello, council. Let's see. My phone's out of my time. I mean, respectful of my time as well, as much as I can. Um, I'm Rodney Gould and the executive director for the Wall Wall County Rural Library District. I've been here in town now just over eighteen months. I started in December of two thousand and sixteen, came from Tacoma. And, um, in that time, um, I've learned a lot about this community, um, not just College Place and Wall Wall, but also the county and, uh, the regional area as well. Um, I'll move on to my next slide. There we go. Okay. Um, just to give you a little bit of background about us in terms of where we are, what we do, um, Michael touched a little bit on things already. That's okay. No, that's okay. Um, where we are, we have a central service center that is located here in, uh, Wall Wall. It is on Jade Street, uh, right next to Coachland's and it is right across the street from where the new tractor supply is going in. We're very excited about that. Um, in addition to all the other businesses that are going in back in the area, um, I think that gives us, um, a lot of good representation there in terms of the community. Um, in terms of who we serve in the community, we serve the residents and patrons of Tushi, Vista Promosa, the, uh, migrant camp out there, uh, Burbank, Prescott, and we have a branch at the Plaza, like at the Plaza Shopping Center here in town. And whom do we serve in town? We have, uh, thirty-six hundred registered card users and, um, we have a hundred and twenty-one registered non-resident card holders. And that would be, uh, those individuals from more than likely College Place or other areas within, uh, the community that are, uh, using our libraries and paying for that service. So altogether, we have about thirty-eight hundred registered users. For our staff, we have, uh, above twenty people on staff right now. Um, we have some fluctuation going on at Burbank with some hiring and, and people leaving for the summer, so, um, our average is twenty. Um, eight of these people are full-time employees. So we have, uh, three full-time librarians with master's degrees in library information and science or, um, master of information studies, uh, that type of degree. Uh, we have five other full-time staff, including our IT manager. Two of our branch managers are full-time. It's really irritating. I'm very sorry. If I could fix it, I would. Um, and, um, we have a cataloger and a cataloger is here, Tom Lada, who's a resident of, uh, Milton Free Water and a full-time office manager. And our collection, um, the collection, these statistics are from this last year. Um, I won't go through all of this information because it's statistics. Um, and you can read that for yourself. But one of the things I wanted to point out is that our ebook collection, um, which is, partly owned by our state consortium for Overdrive, um, and partially, um, funded with some of our own money, um, is creeping closer and closer to our print collection. Um, so that's, that was a statistic that I found especially interesting this last year. Um, audio materials and downloadable audio materials, again, the audio materials, that would be like an audible book, uh, something that you would download from Overdrive. We also offer, uh, seventy-two print subscriptions and twenty-seven databases for, um, searching and, and informational resources. Our collection used in two thousand and sixteen, uh, slithery children's books, uh, about thirty-two thousand adult materials. And, um, of these circulations, um, those were just the physical ones, the fifty-nine hundred or fifty-nine thousand. Um, eleven thousand of those were circulated, um, uh, in electronic format. And again, we have programming for children, young adults, adults. Um, there's our totals and we had almost ten thousand people attend, um, just over eight hundred programs last year. So in terms of our service statistics, we were open almost ten thousand hours, uh, forty-two thousand library visits. And, uh, we, uh, had, uh, sixty-five hundred reference transactions. Um, Carlotta does our internal library loan program, which we do through, um, statewide borrowing as well as national borrowing. Um, so we did eight hundred and thirty-four, um, internal library loans that were provided by us and we received, uh, eleven hundred. So our funding comes from, uh, as Michael was saying, uh, tax loads that are provided from the county. In two thousand and sixteen, our, our funding was at about forty-seven cents per one thousand dollars of assessed property tax value. So you can see there, our revenue in two thousand and sixteen was one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then we spent nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine, uh, dollars for our expenses, which includes, um, staff and materials technology. And what we do is, uh, we work really hard to have, to budget so that we have a, um, a surplus every year that we can roll into our capital budget. And that's how we've been able to fund our new buildings in, um, Prescott and Burbank. We did some renovation in two thousand and seventeen. So we have both of those libraries renovated. And we're also, um, implementing a new, uh, catalog. So we'll have, we're working with another company to, um, implement this new software. So we'll have, which better search and capability and collection visibility. So what makes us uniquely able to serve College Place? And this is my field here. Um, we can provide quality library service to the city at no cost to the city. Uh, there's lawyers to catch twenty-two in that the cost is coming from the taxpayers and that they would have to, uh, vote a levy or vote to levy themselves for this funding. Also, we have knowledge of the community. Um, our staff all lives within the community. Um, we have very few people that do not live in the town that they work in. Um, and we've got board members who are also, um, residents or work in College Place. Um, we, um, yeah, we, we, we have a pulse on the community and we have a pulse on what's going on within the county. We're already a community stakeholder and a property owner in College Place. Uh, for those of you aren't aware, we have, uh, the plot of land next to the high school on College Avenue and, um, I wrote it down because I know I'm going to forget the word. But, yeah, I haven't heard it. Thank you. So if you've driven by there, you'll notice that, that old rowdy house is now gone. Uh, we've done a lot of work and spent, um, quite a lot of money getting that property cleaned up and we're, this week is, is the last week of that effort here for us. We'll be tearing down the last tree and, and getting the brush out of there and then, um, you know, doing some kind of maintenance so that the brush doesn't come back and, and we don't get so many complaints from the neighbors. Um, what we can do is provide immediate library service following passage of a levy and, um, with that, we have our facility in College Place, or in Plaza, um, already established. Um, it's not that far away. Um, we have talked as a board and as a staff about the possibility of, um, possibly opening a storefront library here on College Avenue somewhere, um, as a stopgap measure while we contemplate what to do. Our ultimate goal is to build on that property that we own here and move our service center and our college, or our, our Plaza Library Branch to, uh, to that property. And finally, we have compassionate and forward-thinking board, staff, administration and staff. Um, you know, we see your residents when they come into our office and want their card reimbursement. They want, um, you know, they want the forty dollars from us so that they can use, um, you know, our, our libraries and, and, um, and we talk to them when they come in to, you know, see what their interests are and, um, if there's anything that we can specifically provide for them as non-resident borrowers. So, um, with that, I am going to quit off of this annoying presentation. I apologize. And just go back to, um, go to this side. Wow, that was just a different attention. And this is something you've all seen before. Um, this was the proposal I wrote for you earlier this year, but I wanted to, uh, just show you a couple of pictures of what we've done at our libraries. Uh, the picture here is our Burbank Library after it was renovated. We doubled the size of that library. Um, library there is about, um, eight thousand square feet now and that is our largest branch at the moment. This is Prescott. Um, Prescott, for those of you who don't know, is owned by the Lions Club. Um, and we worked with them to, um, develop a plan to, um, to get all of this work done and, and get it done in a timely fashion. We were able to do the renovation of Prescott in less than four months, um, but the contract for the job was on a little bit of a timeline. Um, but we were able to work with them and, um, pay for the renovations upfront and that enabled the Lions Club to get some work done as well. Um, the desk here you see is custom. You don't see the atrium that's upstairs. There's like a mezzanine level that they, um, put in for a seating area. And again, that is Prescott. The library here where it says our values is the Plaza Library. So if you go to Plaza, that's what you'll see over there, although we've got new furniture there with yours. So you won't see the, the, the orange horseshoe anymore. And the computer work stations there are also Plaza. Uh, the library here that you'll see is the Vista Promosa Library. And that functions as, um, a community library, not just for, um, the community there, but also as a school library. So, um, a lot of the materials that are at that library are in Spanish or by Lindl. Um, the, the collection is quite a bit different than, um, it is at all of our other facilities, just in terms of, um, um, you know, not necessarily just reading level, but, um, the language, um, interests and things like that. This final picture is, which library is that? That's Tushi, sorry. I want to answer that one. Um, and this hopefully this year will be, um, replaced with a new building. So we're working towards that right now, putting up a new structure in Tushi. So we're working towards that right now, putting up a new structure in Tushy. And then again, that's the computer bank up at Burbank and then the library at Prescott. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, if anyone has any. Yes?
What were your non-residents' fees right now?
Forty dollars.
Per family or individual?
Individual.
And that's annual, correct?
Yes.
I saw a picture there with children.
That's per family. Oh, okay.
Forty per family.
Per family.
Okay. The picture of the children having lunch, was that a, is that a program or what was that exactly, that one?
That was probably a program at Vista Promesa. They do a library with the school that's there.
Oh, okay.
And the library is actually located within the school, the community center.
Okay.
So when it's open, it functions as the school library as well.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions for the school?
Okay. Any contact information? Thank you.
Thank you.
The second organization that's here today is MidColumbia Libraries. Kyle O'Sullivan is executive director here, and they both have a district and also contract out on libraries. So they have a contract out of library up in Othello and several other places. And they also have an interest out here. So with that, I will turn it over.
Yes, thanks, Mike. And thank you to the mayor and council for letting me address you tonight. I am joined tonight by Michael Huff, my collections and services director. Michael's in charge of our wonderful collection and programs. Rose Corneille, who is our finance and business director. Thanks, Rose, for being here. Valerie Lottler, our terrific executive assistant, who helps me and the board stay in shape and on track. And of course, Alyssa Burnley, who's our community relations manager, who's also featured in this presentation. So again, I am very happy for presenting to you tonight. Very excited about this. You do have copies of our written proposal in front of you. The proposal that you have details the strengths of MidColumbia Libraries as a public library system, specifically the strengths of our collection, our public programs and outreach, our financial position, our strategic direction and our talented, dedicated staff. MidColumbia Libraries is an inter-county rural library district, which means we have set up to serve more than one county legally. Next year, we'll mark our seventieth anniversary as a district. Our district is that in Franklin Counties. However, we have direct experience serving communities outside of our district and doing that for a number of years, as Michael just pointed out, providing them with both quality and quantity of service they otherwise would not be able to afford on their own. So specifically, Adams County Rural Library District contracts with us, and so we serve the city of Othello and surrounding areas. We also have four library contracts with cities within our district that are not annexed. So we have actually quite a bit of experience working with contracts and with cities on coming up with mutually agreeable solutions for library services. We serve over two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand residents through twelve physical branches, a bookmobile and our increasingly used digital branch. Through the advantage of economies of scale that we can enjoy, we are able to deliver more efficient and cost-effective services to residents of all sizes of the communities we serve, including Collosus, which has less than two hundred residents, all the way to Kennelwick, which has almost more than eighty thousand residents at this point, and we serve all of them, and provide a customized service. We take a systematic approach at MidColumbia Libraries. We have used the Public Library Associations for Results planning model for over twelve years for sustained success. This centralized, community-focused planning model turned a sleepy library system in Eastern Washington into one of the most innovative, responsive and proactive library systems in the state. We were specifically recognized in the forward of the Public Library Associations Implementing for Results novel for the innovations that we had done in finding execution using their model, many of which were used in actually cracking that book. As part of our centralized planning, we are currently in the process of remodeling every single branch across our system. On the top of this slide, is it the red thing? You'll see right here, this is the Croster Library before we remodeled it. We worked hand-in-hand with the city to determine what they needed and what their residents needed for their library. And you can see here what it looks like right now. So we went from this to this. We did it actually under budget, which I was very happy with, and the citizens are very pleased with how it's going. They moved it through the roof. We also have direct experience in planning, designing, building and operating a library in a growing suburban population area that was not served by library services before. This is our West Pasco branch. I and my staff were involved in every single phase of this project. We worked actually with a private builder on a public-private partnership to make this happen. And we also feature, right now, I believe, only working full-service drive-through for any library in Eastern Washington. First and foremost, MidColumbia Libraries is customer-focused. In our initial proposal to the city, which you have in front of you as well, I included the results of our most recent customer satisfaction survey. When we asked customers if they would be interested in sharing how MidColumbia Libraries has improved their lives, we received an outpouring of interest. You see here the MCL speech campaign. If you want further information, you can actually go to our YouTube channel and watch interviews that we had in both English and Spanish of our customers that were very happy with the services they received. So who are we? Who's our staff? I'll talk a little bit about this, including myself. MCL is made up of both well-experienced staff and up-and-coming talent. Pictured here are three of our staff, actually one of our seasoned librarians and two of our library apprentices that are currently in library school. So the first one is Tom Moak. He has thirty-nine years of service as a professional librarian at MCL. He is currently the president of the Court of Kennelwick Commission and was previously in the Bureau of Kennelwick. Very civically engaged, follows kind of where we're at, so I'm very happy about that. Alyssa, who's actually here, say hi, Alyssa. Is currently at U-Dub's High School, finishing her M.O.I.S. Alyssa was very involved in the formation of our regional TEDx conference up there. Again, another example of how people and our staff give back to our community. Michael Kuester is the last person I want to point out. He is our customer service supervisor at our main branch of Kennelwick. He has decided to go to library school. He's doing a program that we have where you sign essentially a loyalty agreement, serve a number of years and will pay for M.O.I.S. We've found that that's actually a better way to attract librarians is to keep them here. So Michael actually did three tours of duty in Iraq as a Black Hawk, two actually in Iraq and one in Afghanistan as a Black Hawk helicopter pilot. And he's decided to become a librarian, and we're very excited to have him on staff.
Endangered turbotus.
All three of these are just examples of some of the more than one hundred and twenty staff that work for MCL that give back to our community in so many different ways. One could say that MCL, MidColumbia Libraries, doesn't know about College Place. Getting to know you is something that I and my staff would do very diligently and enthusiastically to fully understand what your city, both you as a council and your residents, need and want in a library. However, we do have a proven track record of working with a city that's very similar to College Place in terms of demographic composition, which is West Richland, if you see here. We have talented, innovative and forward-looking staff who are here to work with the city to not only meet but exceed the residents' expectations. So you can see here some of the demographic information, very similar between College Place and West Richland. So one of the things we noticed about West Richland, I should say, is that West Richland has the highest digital circulation per capita. That means they check out eBooks three times the rate of the rest of the system. So why is this relevant? Well, it's incredibly relevant when looking at your services. MidColumbia Libraries is one of the largest eBook and audiobook collections outside of the Seattle Metro area. You're one of the first in the state to really sign onto eBooks. We've been purchasing them and developing them, Michael and his staff do a great job since two thousand and nine of doing that. We have almost ninety-five thousand items, digital items available in our system. When an MCL card holder is wanting to check out the newest New York Times book or bestseller, they're only waiting with other MCL customers. We are not part of the state consortium, which means instead of waiting for eighty-thousand people, or, sorry, eight-hundred-thousand people that could be served by that, you're only competing against a little over two-hundred-thousand people. That's important. It's a win-win for our customers because you can wait less time and you get copies of more books available. Also, we have a hundred and twenty-five approximately talented staff, including twelve librarians and two librarian apprentices currently in graduate school. We encourage and support staff involvement in our communities. We have staff involved in Rotary, Kiwanis, local chambers of commerce and many staff and our graduates of leadership Tri-Cities. If the city selected MidColumbia Libraries as your service provider, the city can enjoy the same support and presence of library staff, not just in your library, but out in your community. It's what we do. I do want to take a little bit of time to tell you about me, because I'm the one talking to you, and my story and MCL's story are kind of intertwined for the past thirteen years. I've been with MidColumbia Libraries since two thousand and five, and I've been with MCL for at least another thirteen years, probably a lot longer than that. I've spent most of my life in Eastern Washington. I graduated from high school in the Tri-Cities. I went to Wazoo for my bachelor's degrees, and I chose to raise my children to Eastern Washington. Southeastern Washington is my home. What makes me and MCL unique is that I am a public administrator in addition to being a certified professional librarian. My master's in public administration, specialization is in public personnel management and public finance. As a result, MCL enjoys one of the lowest levy rates across any of the districts in the state, with one of the lowest percentages of operating costs on personnel, while enjoying some of the most well-used collections and programs per capita in the state. My goal, personally and professionally, is to ensure an efficient, effective, innovative public agency with the greatest return on investment possible to my taxpayers. It's an ethical responsibility I take very seriously. Over the past eight years under my leadership, MCL's been recognized by the Regional Chamber of Commerce twice for our involvement in the community, the Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber. And in two thousand and fifteen, we were recognized as a finalist for the National Medal for Library Museum of Science, which means that in two thousand and fifteen, we were recognized as being one of the top fifteen libraries in the entire country. That's a library that wants to serve this city. Every year, MCL surveys our customers to gauge their satisfaction, what we can improve upon, what they like and what they want to see more of. Alyssa actually spends a lot of time doing that every year, going through all those comments and figuring out how we can actually do something about those comments, and we do. You were provided with detailed results in your handout that you can see about what just happened for the two thousand and seventeen results. We see year after year very happy customers. Here you can see our net promoter score that we measure is how likely are you to recommend MCL to someone who does not use MCL. So you can see here Barnes &amp; Noble is forty-five, Amazon is sixty-one, Netflix is sixty-eight, Target is twenty-eight, Walmart is forty, Wal-Mart is fifty, and MidColumbia Libraries as a public service provider is eighty-four point nine seven. That's incredibly high when you think about DMVs and everything else and maybe people that complain at your window too. We're very happy with that promoter score. We have customer-focused policies. We regularly review our policies and procedures to make sure they create better experiences for our customers. As our first quality standard to our customers is courtesy, we want to make sure it's as courteous as possible when they interact with us in any wish, shape or form. A great example of this is auto-renewal. We realized that if no one else requested an item checked out, the customer should be able to automatically renew the item, so they'd have to go back in and manually do it, instead of being charged late fees or having to manually go in and renew the item. When we realized that there wasn't a way to do this, what our staff did, Michael did specifically, is he went out and found two other libraries across the country to help fund this innovative, basically, patch on our system. And what happened was is that our commitment to courtesy pushed us forward to enhance our own library technology. We have a culture of, that's not good enough, we need to be excellent, we need to reduce time waiting, we need to make things as courteous as possible. And now customers automatically are renewed for library items checked out when there isn't an act preserved. Customers have loved this feature, and that's just one of the things that we do, have been doing, that is customer-focused. We have a very robust collection. MidColumbia Libraries has spent more than one million dollars every single year for the past four years on new materials. We have over two-hundred-and-sixty thousand print books in our collection. We have nearly fifteen thousand audiobooks and over thirteen thousand downloadable audiobooks. We have over forty thousand videos available. Those would all be available to check out to your residents and would be our customers. We had a total circulation last year of two-point-four million items. We are heavily used and well-loved. We use real-time monitoring to maximize collection use, which is why MCL has one of the highest turnover rates in the state. Additionally, using our online reserve system, if a requested item is on the shelf in a different branch than your own, if you place the request, it almost always could be your branch by the next day. And because we use pre-processing of materials, our customers get new books for checkout the same day as they would if they would have bought it at the store. We're very proud of that. There's no lag time. There's more information about the collection in your proposal as well. We also have continually put money into technology. We've got a terrific IT staff. We use the Libby app. Our customers now have twenty-four-seven access to our over ninety thousand digital items, eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. Plus, if you live in MCL's service area, using your cell phone number for verification, you could get access via text for our digital card. What does this mean? This means that you can go from no library card to full access to our digital collection, all ninety thousand items, in less than one minute. We're very happy with that. We have a wealth of digital resources available. Books, for example, are a number of customized booklets by our talented staff. We have Book Club Hub that are very talented fiction selectors, Eric Johnson. So I bring those through and actually provides resources for book clubs, which basically tells you what books are available for both sets, making that easier. We also have Pronunciator, which is a database that helps people learn languages. Over eighty languages are available for free, that's very popular right now, including fifty-one different languages for ESL. And then we also have citizenship-based databases. We have very strong community relations in the region that we currently serve, hopefully we'll be going those with you, including the Tri-Cities Latino Community Network. We bring leaders from across all sectors to create partnerships with community-wide relations. We have terrific friends at the library. We have four different 501(c)(3)'s that support us in different ways. They raised over twenty-eight thousand dollars last year just for program support in addition to many other things. And we do food for fines. Every May, people can essentially reduce their fines by one dollar for every item, and all that food goes to local food banks. We have raised consistently tons and, literally tons and tons of food every year for local food banks doing that. We have popular engaging programs. We offered two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight programs last year with an attendance of eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two people. That included a hundred-and-twenty-three storytimes with almost thirty thousand people going to storytime last year alone. Here you see our Glow Hikes. We had it on Badger Mountain. We got eighteen hundred people show up, but of course, three nights to do that. We have our MCL Reads. We have, you can't see them very well, but that is international bestselling author Alexander McCall Smith that we brought in. We had about eighty-three people show up to that one. This is Vito Cultura, a partner of local wineries, where they actually do presentations on books, pairing them with wines that's been very popular. We do a lot of programs outside of the library. And this was our exhibit, The Magical World of J.K. Rowling, which is Harry Potter. We had a thousand people show up at the Kennelwick Library. Most of them were very little children, were very excited to fight games and do crafts and get their feet going. This fall, we are bringing in Emily St. John Mandell. We are the recipient of the Big Read Grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. We received fifteen thousand dollars to buy books essentially and give them out. We're very happy to have her here. It's going to be Station Eleven, which was a national, I think, book award finalist, so that's going to be in November. But this is just more examples of the commitment we have to engaging with our community, providing excellent services and making sure that the library is not just a brick building. You're getting out, you're engaging, you're working with people and you're saving up with them. So I understand the issue in front of this council is a political one, and political factors will need to be considered as you identify a preferred provider. I get that. However, political considerations aside, please ask yourself, which library will provide your residents with a significantly larger, newer collection? Which library can provide a robust and continually growing eBook and downloadable audiobook collection? Which library has a proven track record of consistently high customer satisfaction? Which library can provide your residents with more high-quality programs and events? Which library has proven success in opening a library in a growing suburban community where none existed? And finally, which library will provide far greater return on your investment for each tax dollar you spend on library services? I believe without hesitation, the answer to all these questions is MidColumbia Libraries. I'm happy to respond to questions about the proposal or any financial information too.
Questions from Mr. Collins?
There's been, I know that there's been conversation between the two of you, I recall, about having a facility in College Place, correct? What is the thought on that? Like where would, how would that work?
Well, I mean, there's a couple of options. We wouldn't even work with them, but I mean, we do the property over at Lion Park, the Lions Hall building, which we actually own.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm more asking like, yeah, I kind of asked about a physical location, but I'm thinking more on like staffing and how that's going to work for all, I mean, that too, but same like fast responses or transfers between?
That would all be there too. So we have, we have an intra-library courier system, so we could run them out. Again, we go out to Othello right now, and it's still, it's same day too, so we can definitely make sure that happens. And that would be part of our commitment as well, is that the citizens of College Place would be receiving the exact same level of service you'd be getting if you were actually in one of, well, you'd be one of the MidColumbia Library Branches, so you'd be getting all the same services. So in terms of transfers, the courier, which would be not intra, but initially would be intra-library room, so between, let's say there's a book in Croster and someone in College Place wants it, and no one, it's on the shelf, again, there should be no expectation that it would take a week to get out.
Sure.
Mr. Stevens?
There were some cost numbers earlier. I think it was levy looked like it was about a hundred dollars on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, and there was a forty-dollar discussion. What are the preliminary discussions on this? Do we know it all?
Yes, so I have in your proposal, there's language similar to what? I was proposing language that's very similar to what we do with Adams County, which is also a downtown district. So what we were saying is, the formula that we use for Adams County, the way it's set up, we cannot charge up, we cannot charge you the levy rate that our district pays, which is 36, about 36 cents per thousand. The reason why is that there are some overhead costs that would have to go along with this for centralized services. It just wouldn't cover it. However, what we could do is essentially what we do with Adams County. So, let's say you went out for a 50 cents per thousand type dollar initiative for your library district levy. Well, what we have done with Adams County is they keep between 5% to 7% for themselves, for their own associated costs with a library, and we would take the remainder of that. So, it would actually, it would not be a full 50 cents based on that. And we've been discussing with the council and with Michael in terms of what that looks like, because we understand there would be some costs associated too with running a library on your side. But that has worked very well for Adams County. Again, we're not taking all the money. They're still keeping between 5% and 7%. We've negotiated at different points, and it's been a very successful process for them too, so.
Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
And finally, Mr. Musacella, solar grant.
Okay. I'll just provide a brief overview of this. There's a company that's been working with the last cities and counties in the general area pertaining to solar technology. And even once we put in a well over by the tanks at Woodland and Maple, there still is a remainder of land left over there. And the State Department of Commerce, they actually offer a solar grant where basically it would cover half the cost, it's a 50/50 match, plus Pacific Power. They offer basically money back on the kilowatt hours you produce as well, and that's slated to go down next year. So, there is an opportunity to essentially have it as a profit generator in the long term. The first step to see if it pencils, though, and where they're qualified for said State Department of Commerce grants, you have to do what's called an investment grade audit. And they basically measure where, basically, where the sun rays are and how it would pencil out. That is around 12,000. But I thought it was just an interesting proposal, and I thought I'd run gas you for general thoughts. Main reason is because right now, that rate from Pacific Power is the 8 cents per kilowatt hour, and after next year, it goes down to basically half of that. So, if that is something that was of interest, it would be better to get in the timeframe prior to that dip.
Can we lock in that rate for a specific period of time?
I talked with Oakland, and if we got this investment grade audit done and we were proceeding, we could lock in with a higher rate.
For how?
Basically, what he was telling me is for a period of up to pretty much the duration of the project, as long as it's signed before the end of the year. But if we do this after the end of the year, then that lower rate will kick in, which is basically half, and that would make it a little more challenging. I just want to run it past you, because if this is something you all have my new interest in, we really would need to, I would need to run this investment grade proposal through normal council, because that grant is only available once every biennium, and it actually opens up this fall. So, we would need to scramble and get this IGA done, which I talked to McKinstry, and they are willing to do that, because they're working with Tom Roy, Wal-Mart County, and others, so they're in the area. Then we would be able to essentially turn in this fall and see where things go, but we need the IGA first.
So, Mike, this is the land over there that is, surplus is probably too strong of a word, but it's vacant.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's no, yeah.
We've been holding on to it, because somewhere along that chunk of property, we're planning on putting one of the wells over there, and this would be an opportunity to help power all of that as well. So, it's a very unique opportunity.
Mike, so Pacific Power is the one who would be buying the electricity bag?
Yeah. They have the program for it, technically, Columbia REA put as well, because they have some lines over there. They don't have as good of a program though, for this, so with Pacific Power.
And now, this is completely off-subject. The charging station, was that ever with REA? What's the status of that?
Charging station, we are still talking with them about that one, because that has been fascinating.
That's fine. I was just curious.
It is in, it is in Watts. Unfortunately, they are, they aren't growing up to date as like a Vista was in the Woodland County Service area, so it will happen at some point, but stay tuned.
That's right. Thinking of electricity made me think of electricity, and yeah, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Mr. Pheebs?
I was just curious what the size of that property would be, kind of like, what would be the size of the solar array? And, oh, was there a flat?
It was in the...
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Right here.
Okay.
It's not bad.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
The idea for this really is from a city I used to work at in Bieber, because they had a similar well project, and they ended up putting a solar array up by one of their water tanks in my old facility, and they ended up making quite a bit of money off of it, so.
Sounds good, Mike, from my perspective.
Okay, well, if...
Yeah, I like the idea as well.
What, how are we doing on budget? I mean, what budget would this amount of $12,000...
Yeah, I mean, I would need to review it. There is some additional funds from the...
Other questions?
If you don't mind, the Crosser's proposal, this goes council with that Department of Commerce grant, we would be able essentially to get paid back for this. So, it's, yeah, front and center.
Also, they would pay for the audit if they got the grant?
Yes.
That seems easy.
Other questions? Ms. Ollie?
If we work a deal with the community college where the people that they're training to put up solar stuff, puts it up, could we count that as for their class? Could we count that as in-kind contribution to our town?
That's an interesting idea. We have to run that past the powers.
Because, I mean, we're training the people to do this right there.
Yeah, I would need to run that past the Department of Commerce and McKinstry and everything, yeah.
Wonder what the neighbors will say.
They're going to love it.
Okay. There are alternatives.
Well, I mean, I'll just tell you this, because I experienced a similar issue in Bieber, Oregon, because if you go on Marie Boulevard, that's a sex... There's everywhere, everyone just walks their dogs, and they basically covered the entire top of it with solar panels. Initially, when it was announced, the people, what their dogs were and all that, but then once it was built, they saw that there was actually a positive income coming off of it, then all complaints dropped down. And really, once you live within, you see that it's not that big of an issue over there. They actually have two signs of the looking down of solar.
This is going to be screened from the neighbors on the one side.